Thank you, City of Vista Planning Commission. Michael, would you lead us in the pledge this evening?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Turley, would you call the roll, please?
I will. Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Garrison.
Here.
Commissioner Jacko.
Here.
Chairman Rosler.
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, before you, you've received through email the minutes of our July 18th meeting. There's one addition that needs to be made. On the second item, the public hearing on BlackRock, the vote didn't appear after Commissioner Garrison's second. So the vote was 7-0, and we'll make that one correction. Are there any other corrections or comments on the minutes? If not, if I can hear a motion and a second to approve. Commissioner Kramer?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the minutes from the July 18th meeting, including the changes that you've requested.
Very good. Commissioner Carroll?
I will second the motion.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the July 18th meeting. If you'd please vote. And the minutes are approved unanimously by the commissioners. The next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is a time set aside for items that are not on our agenda. I have no speaker's slip. Anyone want to speak to the commission on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, then we'll move on to our discussion item. This is a presentation by Mr. Hamilton on the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. To make Mr. Stone happy this evening, your question should be framed generally and not project-specific. Since we haven't noticed those projects, we ask your question, understand the concern, but ask it in a broad, general nature on the item. So, Mr. Hamilton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Rosler. John Hamilton, the city's only environmental planner, and I'm happy to be here tonight. I appreciate your attendance, and we have a presentation that we've, I've tried to really keep to as basic concepts and understandings as I possibly can. It's 18 slides, and the good news is there's only 16 that have any kind of real information on them. So, and I'm looking and thinking about this as really an opportunity to have a conversation about CEQA. And it was at the behest of John Conley that we talked about and developed this presentation, more likely from the fact that, you know, the city is pretty much built out. So, we've been looking at or dealing with, and you particularly have been, development on infill sites, and a lot of those are pretty difficult, and, you know, there's lots of people around. So I think, given that and given some of the controversy we've had the past couple of years, we thought it'd be a good time to just try and go over some of the basics. So it's basically a refresher. A lot of this you've probably heard before, so if you would bear with me, some of this stuff may seem, again, real basic or not that interesting, but I'll do my best to make it worth your time tonight. The presentation topics are really divided into four issues, which is CEQA overview, the planning commission's responsibilities, the key steps in the CEQA process, and what to look for as a commissioner. So CEQA actually goes back to NEPA. When President Nixon signed in on January 1st, CEQA, which was signed in 1970, was viewed as a mini NEPA, and it was really the first state to enact those laws. The basic objectives of CEQA is to inform, identify, prevent, and disclose. The first objective, informing, is really to provide information to the decision-makers in the public about the potential significant environmental impacts of a proposed project. To identify, the objective to identify really is to distinguish ways to avoid or reduce potentially significant impacts to the environment. Preventing is about minimizing the significant and avoidable impacts to the environment by using feasible mitigation measures or alternatives. And then to disclose, it really is about divulging to the public the reasons a project is approved, even if it will have some significant adverse impacts on the environment. I also want to just hopefully encourage you, if you want to interrupt me at any time, please do for questions. Trying to make this as informal as we can here. Some really important concepts about CEQA from our point of view is it's not a permit, it's a process. And CEQA neither approves or denies a project. It's not a planning act, and it really provides environmental analysis is one way to understand the outcome of a proposed land use change. And also, it really provides decision-makers with information about a project's potential to adversely affect the physical environment. The rules governing CEQA, this is fun. The statute is really the laws that are set up by the legislature, and the guidelines are just that, they're an interpretation in a lot of ways of what the statute is about. The guidelines probably are, I guess they're being updated about yearly, because when we get to the courts in case law, that's where the rubber meets the road, and I'm sure Commissioner Bell has some understanding of the changes that CEQA can incur even on a yearly basis. Sometimes you have decisions that seem quite opposite from what was originally either found in a previous court, and then something else happens. The city just has a municipal code chapter, which is basically stating that we were following the CEQA guidelines in the Appendix G checklist. And then there's other local, regional, and state agencies that also have their own rules and regulations governing CEQA, Caltrans. NAHC is the Native American Heritage Commission. There is two recent, actually one recent law that had a lot to do with CEQA and tribal resources, involves a lot more consultation. And California Department of Fish and Wildlife, County of San Diego, and those kinds of agencies. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry? Microphone. If there's a difference of interpretation between the city, the courts, the, what is the priority? What is the preference or the?
Well, I think, I think what would be is you would be looking at what the guidelines state currently, the statute and then the guidelines, and my understanding is the differences, if there's differences where, you know, someone comes out and institutes a suit because they don't agree with the CEQA document of a project, it goes to the courts. So my understanding is that you're looking at, because CEQA is state law, you're following state law through the guidelines and the statute.
So it's important that if there's an issue or question, to get competent attorneys involved?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Right from the get-go. Yeah. Let me just see if I, yeah, okay. CEQA documents in brief, this is hard to do in a brief amount of time, but I'm going to try and do my best here. First off, there's exemptions, and there are two types. There's a statutory and a categorical. The statutory is like it sounds, it's set up by the legislature, so for projects like emergency projects, actually ministerial projects, those types of actions, there's an exemption for that. Categorical is actually the one that the city uses the most. I've, will have been here 10 years, August 7th, and I've never had to use a statutory exemption at all. But categorical, we use all the time, and that is that the National Resources Agency has set up categories of projects, let's say, like existing facilities, for instance. If there is a project that maybe, maybe there's an existing cell tower, and then there's going to be additional antenna put on it, well, that's a good, that's a good case for an exemption, because it's an existing facility, and the project is actually changing, changing out some of the antenna. That's, that's the kind of exemption that we would use. And, you know, we've also had instances, not that often, where we've used a couple of categorical exemptions, just to cover the nature of the project. So basically, what we're looking at in exemption is there's no public review requirement for it. It's a one-page form, and it's filed with the county. There's a $50 fee, administrative fee, and what that does is when you file it, it basically starts a 35-day statute of limitations period where the public or an agency is 35 days in which they can, they can process a legal action against the project. Generally, we have, it depends. We've done it both ways. Sometimes we send it in. That's certainly what happens, Commissioner Garrison. We generally send it in. Sometimes the applicant will, but we generally do that. The next document up is a negative declaration, and that's really around a project where the proposed finding is that there's not going to be a significant effect. It always includes an initial study checklist, supported by a narrative analysis. And the document can typically range from between 20 and 40 pages, may include technical reports. A lot of times what I've done is I put the technical reports either available online, depending on the nature of the report, or generally have them, we always have them available at the counter. And we also send out a notice of intent to adopt the negative declaration to the public and agencies, and the public review period is generally 20 or 30 days. The difference between the two is generally if it's a project that is either controversial or a state agency needs to review the document, we do 30 days. Otherwise, we'll do 20. And then the final negative deck may include responses to comment from the agencies and the public. And then a notice of determination is filed within five days after the adoption, which again starts a 30-day court challenge period of project approval. Yes?
When you say that's filed?
Again, filed with the county, I'm sorry.
Is it, is it filed on the website or on any place in the planning?
It's actually physically filed with the county.
Does the city have a copy of it?
Yes, we always have a copy of it. What happens is, and this is when we start getting into these documents like negative deck and mitigated neck and especially EIR, that's when sometimes the anxiety of the applicant will take over and they'll, they'll do it for us. And there is a, when you get to notice of determination, there is a fee. It's, it's for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And that, that's changed every year. It never goes down, it always goes up. And so there's a, you know, right now, it's, I think it's, boy, I think it's, is it Patsy? Do you remember? It's about?
About 2,000.
Yeah, about 2,000 or so. And that has to, that generally has to be done within five business days now of when a project is approved. Any questions? Yes?
So this notice of determination period, it would be where if somebody wanted to file suit because they didn't agree with the finding or the?
Right.
Adoption of the project.
Correct. And what, what the notice of determination does, now sometimes there's actually times in applicants where, especially for a negative declaration, which generally is done for a project, obviously that doesn't appear to have any significant impact or effect on the environment. So sometimes an applicant will forego even filing an NOD, because what the notice of determination does is it really protects the applicant. It shortens that, that challenge period. Otherwise, it'd be 180 days. So, but that's a risk that, you know, we, we talk to the applicant about. Mitigated negative declarations are where through the adoption of mitigation measures, there is still no substantial evidence that the project, as revised, would have a significant impact on the environment. Again, it always includes an initial study checklist, supported by narrative analysis, and feasible mitigation measures. This is the document that I actually happen to prepare quite often. You'll probably see my name somewhere on it. The document typically ranges between 16 and 90 pages. Again, it's always backed up with technical reports. We have as-needed consultants that do traffic, air quality, greenhouse gas analysis, biology, cultural. And what I try and do is, again, because we're putting it, the document on the website, I don't want to overwhelm people, because CEQA is really supposed to be quote-unquote "not technical," but that's not true any longer. But we try and, you know, certainly make it available. If a document has some issues that are really important, we'll put the technical reports on the website. But, but the, and then moving on, the notice of intent to adopt is sent to notify public review, and again, it's a 20 or 30-day review period. The final MND includes responses to comments from agencies in the public, and included with that is, not always, but often enough, there are some, some changes we have to make to the, to the document, the draft MND, either in response to a comment or if we find some grammatical errors or something.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
I've had an issue with the comments and the response to comments that we've had in past documents. There was one project with a letter from an attorney over in Escondido that raised some legitimate questions about traffic at the very beginning, but then later on in the third or fourth page of the letter, they raised like 10 comments about the project not complying with our general plan. And so I'm reading through, I'm reading the comments, and I'm reading your response, and basically it was nonsense. And as explained in the response, the comment has nothing to do or complies with the general plan. The example was the bicycle. The comment said it wasn't in conformance with our bicycle plan, and yet there wasn't a bicycle trail or pathway in front of the project, but it had bicycle parking in the project. And so you, you had to respond that it was, I can't remember the exact wording that you used, but the comment wasn't appropriate or significant. And as I'm sitting there reading that, I'm getting angry because it's a waste of my time. I got five days to read your 40-page document to?
Right.
Be prepared to be here tonight. And it seemed like, it seemed like I wanted to call the guy out on it, but I was afraid of causing problems for staff or Mr. Stone, so?
Right.
I thought it was an abuse of CEQA, that they were just raising as many issues as they could to cause us problems or take our time. So just, is it a, is it a good idea to tell them that I think their comments are nonsense and an abuse of CEQA, or should I just bite my tongue?
Well, that's a really good question. I've had a lot of experience in response to comments, both on the public side and the private side. Essentially, I would probably err towards biting my tongue because of the simple fact that your deliberations are actually going to be part of the administrative record.
Right.
So you'll see a slide later on that'll have, you know, a little bit of a caution about that. But in fact, CEQA states that we have to respond to every single written comment. Sure. Now, if, if we, if there has to be a substantive response if it's a CEQA-related issue. But, you know, quite frankly, many times what happens these days is CEQA is a way where people not only register their displeasure of a project, but one time, when I first started out in California back in 2000, I was working for a private firm, and we were doing a project for a jurisdiction up around LA, and the neighboring jurisdiction hired a CEQA gun, they called it, and Mr. Bell's smiling because he's probably familiar with this. So that person assembled over 400 comments. Many of them were not substantive in the least, so, and that was, that was quite an awakening, because it took us literally about a month and a half to get through it. But, but, you know, that's, in a sense, that's, I mean, CEQA is, for better or for worse, a document that is a public document, and it's about public information. So, you know, and I honestly, sometimes, yeah, you've got people that are pretty smart about it and make comments that may not be germane, but then you've got comments that I think arise because people don't understand the process, and it's complicated, certainly, but.
Yeah, if I could just add, I agree with what Mr. Hamilton said. CEQA, you know, with very, a great deal of frequency is used to the advantage of people who might oppose a project. And so it's not uncommon for an attorney or others to raise comments just to preserve the issue for the record in order to then have an opportunity to, you know, bring a legal challenge, rather than just omit the comment altogether. We have encountered attorneys raising CEQA objections countless times. Very frequently, we'll see what they call a document dump, which is to bring in just a colossal amount of information, including technical studies and so on, on the very evening that you're about to approve a project. And at that point in time, you know, it might be, require, you know, delaying action on the project in order to properly assess what's been just entered into the record. I think that sometimes the courts really will focus on the evidence, and that's really what it comes down to. Sometimes it's a very deferential standard, as Mr. Hamilton, you know, will likely address later on, in terms of whether or not a, and when I say deferential, I mean deferential to a project opponent arguing that an EIR should have been used rather than a negative declaration. And the court's going to look at the evidence in making that determination. They, the court will also want to make sure that the decision-makers, the people in your seats are unbiased. And so a commentary that might show animus towards a project applicant or opponents really can be utilized or leveraged, even if it's just a little isolated comment. I mean, these things get leveraged by the attorneys when they get to court, and they try to present bias, and that the decision was not based upon the evidence, but it was based upon some sort of ulterior motive. So if there's a comment to identify some fault or lack of reasoning in a comment, you know, made by a project opponent or a project proponent, certainly that can be made, but just, you know, frustration, even though I experience it myself, isn't necessarily going to be, you know, seen positively by a court.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Garrison?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bell, next. Describe substantial evidence.
Substantial evidence is really, or it's really about substantial adverse physical change in the environment due to a project's construction, I guess. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean?
Or is it that you're, you're looking for, okay, substantial evidence? So that's really about enough relevant information and inferences from the information that a fair argument can be made to support a conclusion. So that's, and substantial evidence really comes into play in terms of EIRs versus a negative declaration. Negative declarations and mitigated negative declarations, it's, it's basically a risk for, in a sense, for a city, because the threshold for a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration is a fair argument. If a opponent of a project can put together? If a opponent of a project can put together information that is not only just substantial evidence, but also can be fairly argued, then, and this is what Mr. Stone was suggesting, that a lot of times the courts will say that, well, the project needs to have done an EIR rather than a negdech. Also, it's important to say that for substantial evidence, it's supposed to include facts, reasonable assumptions presented predicated upon facts and expert opinion that are also supported by facts. It doesn't include argument or speculation or unsubstantiated opinions like, you know, if a commenter says they don't think a solar panel should be developed or they think a stoplight should be installed. That's the kind of thing where substantial evidence is really based on facts for the most part.
Just to add to that, it's, again, when you get to court, the court's going to want to know what standard it uses to decide whether the decision made by the governmental body should be sustained. And the standards that the court uses will vary depending upon whether an EIR was approved or a negative declaration. And an EIR is subject to a more preferential review standard for the city than is a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration. That means that if an EIR is prepared, it's more easily defended in court. And all you need to do is show there's substantial evidence to support the conclusion of the decision makers, which is not necessarily, doesn't necessarily mean that the only result was to approve the negative declaration. Or even that maybe it might not be the best result in the court's mind, but it's a reasonable result. In contrast, to sustain a negative declaration or mitigate a negative declaration, you have to demonstrate that there is no substantial evidence to support a fair argument that the project would produce a significant adverse impact. And that's just simply a harder standard to satisfy. And so project proponents or applicants will sometimes opt to prepare an EIR just to help, you know, avoid a legal challenge to the project. But of course, even those types of documents are often legally challenged, as you've probably...
There's two sides. One is the legal side, the other is what we have to decide. We have to approve the mitigated negative declaration. And so we should have some guidelines about what is substantial evidence.
When you make the decision, I would suggest that you follow what would be more in the lines of the preponderance of the evidence, what you think is the best choice. So it's not a matter of substantial evidence. It's a matter of whether you actually believe the decision that you're about to make is the correct decision. Mr. Hamilton, would you be in agreement with that?
Yes, I would.
Commissioner Bell had his question answered, so continue?
All right. An EIR is required, as we've been talking about, when it can be fairly argued that, on the basis of substantial evidence and the whole record, a project may have a significant effect on the environment. It's interesting, documents can typically range up to 500 pages, including tech reports, but there are some instances where it's far greater. And I say that smiling because in SEQA, and I think it's still there, it says that EIRs should be around 300 pages. But these days, it just doesn't seem like that's going to happen too often, particularly in light of the constantly evolving topic of greenhouse gas emissions. That's a tough one. For the EIRs, there's a notice of preparation, which is basically stating that we're going to be preparing an EIR and that's sent to the state clearinghouse and other agencies in the public for a 30-day review. And basically what it is, it's setting up the scope of the EIR. So we encourage people to comment on it, or agencies to comment on it. And those comments are included in the draft EIR. And the public review of the draft EIR can be up to 60 days, but typically it's 45 days because it's sent to the state clearinghouse. The final EIR includes, again, responses to comments from agencies in the public. And again, any clarifications in the draft EIR to the comments. And once again, an NLD is filed within five days after adoption. I mean, after certification, it should be, sorry. That starts a 30-day challenge period for project approval under SEQA. It's an important distinction to make. Negdechs and mitigated negdechs are adopted, EIRs are certified. Key participants in the SEQA process include responsible agencies, agencies with jurisdiction by law, and trustee agencies. And it's... Unfortunately, this slide's a little redundant because all three of those can be, that you can have a trustee agency that's a responsible agency, that's also an agency that has a jurisdiction by law, like California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So this was a slide that I perused on the web and saw it. But also, key participants are concerned citizens and organizations, California tribes. I had mentioned with AB 52, that's a new law under SEQA which requires consultation with Native American tribes before a SEQA document, like an MND or an EIR, is published for review. And also, obviously, project applicants and environmental consultants. We hire environmental consultants to prepare EIRs, thankfully. I still have to review them, which can be involved. And then, of course, there's the courts. And we had mentioned and talked about that before. And Mr. Stone had mentioned that a number of times. Are there any questions so far? We're turning to what we're talking about in terms of responsibilities of the planning commission. So prior to the public hearing, as Mr. Stone alluded to, I think in reference to Commissioner Garrettson's question, the city is responsible for a good faith effort to comply with SEQA. So therefore, you, as the planning commissioner, are responsible for all content and adequacy of the documents in effect. I mean, that's our charge in the planning division. And so with that, the document has to reflect the city's independent judgment. So obviously, as you all know very well, it's important to review and familiarize yourself with the SEQA document. And then if there's any questions or concerns before the hearing, obviously, to let us know. Hopefully, in enough time that we can properly answer or look up the answers, whatever that you might need. In conducting public hearing for project approval, all comments regarding a SEQA document received by the public become part of the administrative record. And that has to be considered during deliberations of approval. So if there is litigation over a SEQA document, the city will be the defendant. So therefore, please use discretion in your hearings as they are also part of the administrative record. For projects that the commission alone approves, you're going to be adopting an exemption or a negative declaration, a mitigated negative declaration, which at that point, it's a... For the negdech or the mitigated negdech, it's going to be a final that you're going to be looking at, which usually will include response to comments. And would also include a MMRP or a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is required by SEQA. And then, again, as I had mentioned before, you're going to be certified in a final EIR, adopting findings, the MMRP, and a statement of overriding considerations if necessary. So the findings are a bit challenging because you have to essentially make findings for each of the topics and the resource topics like air quality, cultural. And then you have to make essentially a finding of... Either that there's three findings. You have to either state that there are changes or alterations that have been required and incorporated into the project, or the changes and alterations that are responsible for a different jurisdiction, or there are specific economic, legal, other considerations that prevent the infeasibility of a mitigation measure. And a statement of overriding considerations is necessary if there is a significant impact that is not mitigable. Even though you may have a mitigation measure, it may still, the impact may still remain significant. That has a lot to do with, I think, a lot of times with traffic issues, in my experience. And then, as you're well aware, as a decision-making body, adoption and certification must be appealable to elected decision-making body. And for this, that's city council. It's interesting because that's actually in SEQA. I didn't realize that until I started putting this together. I always learn something. That's why I consider myself a practitioner, not an expert. Key steps in the SEQA process, this is a very truncated set of steps, but basically, we're reviewing the preliminary, the proposed action to begin with. And then we have to decide if an action is a project and subject to SEQA. So a project under SEQA means the whole of an action that's got a potential for resulting in either a direct physical change in the environment or an indirect change, I should say, reasonably foreseeable indirect change. And also, if it's discretionary, permit is needed. The next thing is to decide if a project is exempt or not. It brings a smile to my face, quite frankly, if I can see that in exemption because I only have to deal with a one-page form. And you don't have to spend too much time at it either. And then, again, we're looking, if it's not exempt, then you have to make the determination of environmental document, which is principally based on, you know, if there's going to be... If there's a fair argument to be made, whether the project will have a significant impact on the environment and there's substantial evidence to that. And that's basically the determination of an MND, ND, or EIR, yes?
Who prepares that document, the SEQA document?
Well, the SEQA document for the city, for exemptions, NDs or negative declarations or MNDs, I do. If it's an EIR, we hire environmental consultants.
So is it like a template that you basically go in and fill the empty lines?
I wish it was that simple. It, we have a... I have a set of documents that I kind of group according to the kind of project that's involved. And, you know, we certainly have a template in the sense of what are the issues that we need to look at and how to kind of structure it. But from my point of view and my experience, what's tricky is the project description because I tend to spend a lot of time on that because that has been the subject of a lot of SEQA litigation. And I've been told by my esteemed colleague and supervisor, Pasi Chow, that the rest of the planning staff use the SEQA document that I prepare, particularly the project description for staff reports. So I'm happy because it makes their job easier.
So the premise of an evaluation of a project is based on its scope and your opinion of whether or not it has a significant environmental...
Yeah, and it's, yeah, and it's... Commissioner Looney, it's with consultation with the project manager or the director. I mean, it's not something that I tend to make myself very often. It's always in consultation with, and also with the applicant, quite frankly. But it's, yeah, and it's based on experience in terms of what we think we can reasonably do. We tend to, I tend to be conservative in terms of the document preparation.
So if I was objecting to the SEQA, then I could hire someone that would refute each item that has been prepared within that document?
Right.
Commissioner Looney, also keep in mind that the technical reports that are prepared for the environmental document, those are part of what goes into the analysis that John Hamilton, along with the applicant, the planner, the consultant. So it's kind of all in that process, I guess, when we're trying to identify in terms of the impacts and what we consider to be something that's, you know, relevant or not, or if it's just not something that's substantial. So there is the data and the facts that are associated with it. So it's not a subjective opinion, I guess. You know, I think that it's going to have a bad effect, kind of a thing, so...
So the data and the facts, are those assembled within the framework of the state or by the government who's prepared kind of the guidelines?
Say that again?
The question is if the actual reports, when they're prepared, are they based on a set of parameters that the state is saying, you must analyze these particular points or these particular issues? Is that your question?
And does the state establish some type of measurement?
Well, it's basically, what it really comes down to, Commissioner Looney, is what is called Appendix G. It's a checklist and it's got, at this point, 19 resource topics. And that's what most of the SEQA practitioners in the state do, is they use that. You know, when we talk about like an MND initial study, it, the bulk of it really is about the checklist. So you're using the checklist to answer... And in each of the resource topics, like for cultural, there'll be a series of questions that essentially ask the preparer and the applicant and the city planning division, you know, is this project going to be a significant impact based on a particular analysis? Now, some of it is qualitative and some of it is quantitative. But essentially, that's what, how we, you know, we really formulate and format the documents. So I think if I understand your question, there is this Appendix G, this checklist that we're following. And essentially, it's, those are essentially setting up significant thresholds. So you're analyzing the project and if the questions are saying, well, is it going beyond a particular method analysis? In your analysis, is it going above a certain... Is it like for air quality, is it creating an impact of... Is it like for air quality, is it creating an impact of that is, that's creating more pollution, say? That's kind of like what we're-
So as a planning commission, as we approve a project-
Mm-hmm.
-we are essentially basing our approval on a governmental system that has already developed this framework in which-
I would say, yeah, right.
-you have filled in the gaps, or filled in the blanks, so to speak, for that-
Right.
...specific project.
Right, so I would say, yeah, in essence, yes, although I wish it would feel more like I'm filling in the gaps than it really is, but that is, in part, what it is in simplest terms.
So if I choose to disagree-
Right.
-with that report, then I'm really going contrary to what the state has set up?
You mean, in terms of the topics? Is that what you're asking?
Or the level of input?
Or is it-
The level of input.
Of impact.
Of impact, yeah.
So the Appendix G is maybe a checklist to make sure that Mr. Hamilton or others are thorough. And so it will include a whole range of topics, and if Mr. Hamilton were not to assess one of the topics in that list, it could easily be an incomplete environmental review. So going through that checklist, which, you know, includes assessing biological impacts, aesthetic impacts, impacts to, you know, the air quality and so on, assures that there's a thorough review. And then the question is, is the impact within that category, water quality or historical resources, going to be an impact that's significant? In some instances, there's, I think, an objective threshold, like in traffic, for instance, or at least there has been. And so that's really more of a scientific evaluation as to whether that significance threshold is triggered or not. In other instances, whether there's a significant aesthetic impact, that's more of a subjective determination. But if I recall, the list will ask if there's like a significant view shed that's impacted or maybe, you know, there's a historical resource that will be obstructed in the view by a project. And so things of that nature, you know, would be more likely to be considered to be significant than, you know, disruption of a vista that's more ordinary in nature. Mr. Hamilton, is that, you know?
Yeah, I would say, I would say so. Again, I'm going to go back to my notes here. You know, when you're looking at quantitative thresholds of significance, you're looking at, let's say, for air quality, you're looking at the air emissions level or noise standards. When you're looking at issues that Mr. Stone said, like aesthetics, when you're looking at a visual impact, that's really about quality, the quality of the analysis. That's more of a qualit, what I would call a qualitative threshold of significance. Same thing with cultural, historic resources, so.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
The checklist, and your response to it, you're filling out, is the basis of the environmental document. And when we look at a mitigated neg deck or a neg deck, that's part of that record, right? We, I seem to remember-
Yes, sir.
-reviewing all of that as we-
Right. And that's really the core of the document.
Okay.
And even when you get to an EIR, it's really that part of that, too. So you've got that format, and you're looking at issues. It doesn't mean you can't come up with different issues or add some to a particular project, but essentially, yeah, it's the Appendix G. So let's see, public review, adopt, and notice of determination. So we're going to just, so here's what I come up with in terms of what to look for as a commissioner. And these are just some, they're not prescriptive, they're not the only ones. But for an exemption, does the project fit within the exemption? Is there any unusual circumstances? This is indirect, indirect to a recent court case up in Berkeley where the opponents were talking about a significant impact because a single home was huge, and they were talking about that. That created, because that was, they termed that a significant impact because it was, the opponent said that was an unusual circumstance. So that's something that you ask, I think that's something, the kinds of things you would ask yourself about an exemption. For NDs and MNDs, does the initial study include significant, sufficient, I'm sorry, analysis to support the conclusions that there's no fair argument for a significant impact? For an MND, does the mitigation adequately address an impact of the project? And is the mitigation specific enough to implement as a condition of approval? For EIRs, what to look for is things like, is the environment in the vicinity of the project described as it exists before commencement of the project? That has to do with what the project baseline is.
System conditions.
Are any described analytical methods based on professional practice or recommended by responsible agencies or required or indicated by other laws? Is there a feasible mitigation measure for each potentially significant impact? And if there isn't, is there a reasonable explanation for its infeasibility? And then, in the final EIR, have mitigation measures or alternatives suggested by commenters been addressed in the written responses to comments? Any questions on those at all? When the commission has the final decision on a project, remember, it's not your role to write the SEQA document, but to review it for adequacy. You should be comfortable with adopting an exemption, as we started to talk about, and you should also be satisfied with the adequacy of the SEQA document before adopting an ND, MND, or certifying an EIR and approving the related findings. With that, I think it's important to say that, you know, the analysis that you're looking at doesn't need to be exhaustive, it just needs to be reasonable. And you can even have disagreements among experts if somebody's challenging through a comment on an EIR. It doesn't make the document inadequate, it just means that the final EIR, the response to comments, needs to discuss what the disagreement is. Because the courts are not looking for perfection in these documents, they're really looking for adequacy, completeness, and a good faith effort at disclosure, which is really important. Would you, would you agree with that?
Yes, I would, and I think one thing to remember is that when it comes to opinions, opinions really will not count for much in a court if they're not backed up with evidence and the reasons to support the opinion and the expertise to actually, you know, draw out legitimate conclusions based upon the opinion. So sometimes, if you have a traffic expert who's actually knows how to use the computer models, knows how to make the assessments and utilize the data, and is saying, "This project's going to have a traffic impact of a particular level," and then you might have a neighbor who says, "I think this is going to have huge, you know, traffic impacts," and it's just an opinion without actually any evidentiary base or expertise upon which to base it. At least when you get to court, the court's going to be relying on the expert opinion, which is based upon the evidence. And so, you know, sometimes 10 opinions, which are uninformed, at least in a court, won't carry the weight, let's say, of one opinion that is, you know, is informed, an expert.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
What is the threshold that makes the city decide that a full EIR is necessary?
It's really whether a fair argument can be made that a, I mean, I think you're looking at, fair argument is substantial evidence. It's really if, if there can be a fair argument made that a project would have a significant impact on the environment, so, and there has to be substantial evidence that would support that. So it's never an easy decision, in a way, because sometimes with mitigation, a project's potential significant impacts can be reduced to less than significant. But sometimes it's the size of a project, like maybe a lot of housing units, if there's, if there's, for instance, there's a project we're dealing with where there's a, and a surprise to the applicant, there's a sensitive rare species of plant on a project. That's a time where, with consultation with the resource agencies, an EIR might be the best route. It's, I wish there was a quick and easy way to say what the deciding factor is, it takes some consultation with the planning staff and with the applicant. But does that help answer your question? Okay.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Looking back at some of the earlier slides, it looks like you're saying the city has a standard of having a good faith effort to comply with SEQA, and then at the same time, the document has to reflect the city's independent judgment. So from my perspective as a planning commissioner, once it gets to my desk up here, I'm going with the assumption that it has gone through all the proper channels, you guys have made the proper decisions, you've analyzed and made choices as to what's included and what doesn't need to be included based on-
Right.
-the standards and your expertise.
Right.
So that makes me feel a little bit better about what I can make a decision based on. And that leads into the question you had earlier about comments and responses, because I think, in general, we've seen some with a lot of comments, some with very few.
Right.
And I imagine, from an attorney's perspective, I threw everything in just so I can argue it later, and there's some extent that happens. But do you have any other thoughts, from the city's perspective, on how to not just comply with the regulations and the standards, but to actually address concerns that people might have through comments? Because I know we get a lot of, in general, we get a lot of letters that say, "I don't want more traffic in my backyard, I don't want the light coming in from the neighbor's yard," and so on. Anything in your general experience, whether it's with this city or other places, on how to address that in a way that helps? Because I feel like sometimes our job here is to take in complaints from the public and make sure they're heard.
Right.
And that's an important way, because the city council just can't do that all.
Right.
And so, any thoughts on that area that you've had experience with?
Well, it's something that actually, we talk about quite often in planning division, and actually, Ms. Chow may have some opinions about this, but I think it actually has to do with the applicant and how they basically discuss their project, particularly with the neighbors-
Yeah.
-and with people in the surrounding area. In my view, you know, I've been in environmental planning, urban planning, for over 30 years here and on the East Coast, and that seems to be an issue that can really kind of make or break a project and also would help or really hinder your efforts. It's really how the applicant, and it's not just, you know, with city officials, it's really getting out to the public and trying to deal with and explaining to people, you know, the pluses and minuses, because there always is. But, and it's something that, you know, I know that Ms. Chow and I, we talk about, and Mr. Esler quite often, is, you know, either they're right on with it or there's a lack of it. And I, you know, I don't know what you think, Ms. Chow, but-
And I don't mean to pin you down with a specific question, I just-
No, no, I think that it's, it's a very valid one, and it's an important one.
I wonder, what are the levels those comments go through and the filters go through, outside of the basic responsibility you have to respond to them?
Right.
But what else can the city do or what else can we do to make them heard? And, because that's the reason for the regulation in the first place, right?
Right.
It's not because we want it to be a fair and open process, we want people to have their comments heard.
Right.
And even if the response is, "This doesn't make sense, it's not based on anything that we can actually judge or weigh."
Right.
That's the response, but I don't know if you have more than that.
I might add a little something. I think that, in some respects, SEQA will set a minimum standard.
Yeah.
If there is a significant impact and there's a feasible mitigation measure, it must be adopted. So there are certain actions that SEQA will demand, but when there's not a significant impact, SEQA's not going to call that, you know, require that it be mitigated. For instance, if there's not a significant noise impact, SEQA isn't going to require that it be mitigated, but there might be an opportunity, it's part of the decision-making process that you engage in, to address the noise impacts, although SEQA might not demand it.
Okay.
The same is true for aesthetic impacts. You're constantly dealing with aesthetic concerns or circulation concerns that actually don't rise to the level of significance, but you're still making improvements in responding to the community's concerns.
That's a good point, thank you.
I'll say, just one last thing is, the place also where I try and to make some difference in terms of impact is in mitigation measures. I try and, you know, there always has to be a nexus to the mitigation measures and make them feasible, but, you know, I'm pretty sensitive to what is happening in terms of a project, for instance, noise, and construction noise, for instance. In the past, a lot of times, people would say, "Oh, it's just temporary, don't worry about it." And we've gone above and beyond that and just said, "Well, wait a minute, there is noise." And so we've tried to structure the mitigation, you know, within reason, but also making sure that, you know, if there's, if the technical report is saying that there's going to be a noise impact, we, you know, we'll come up with noise walls or whatever we need to do, so. Commissioner Garrett, see, you had a question?
Yes, and it relates to a comment you just made about, a lot of the problems are created because the developer doesn't communicate adequately with the surrounding community. So my question is, what does the city do to try to get the developers to do a better job of that? I mean, people show up and say, "Well, I've never seen this person. I met with a developer one time, said, 'Oh, I had this big tent meeting with everybody and food and all that sort of thing,' and not one person in the neighborhood knew anything about it."
Yeah.
So what does the city do to try to address that? I mean, obviously, they can't mandate-
Right.
-that they communicate, but I agree with you, that's a big part of a lot of the issues.
It seems to be, yeah.
It's either timing or a lack of effort, because people, developers, think they have checked all the checkmarks, therefore, those people don't matter.
Yeah.
I can see if I can help out in answering that one or start a discussion on that, is two things. is two things come to mind. We have the early design review for the multifamily projects, and I think that has been a great process and an effort on the city's part to try to get the word out early, and also to allow the residents, the neighbors, concerned citizens to come before you in that setting to kind of say, hey, I'm seeing these things, and please keep those in mind as you move forward with the project. And I think that has, in my opinion, as I've seen some of the early design reviews and the developers that have come before you, is that they have actually made an effort to be in touch with the community, as I am a planner reviewer as well, as Michael Rafi and John and, and Chris and John Conley, is the fact that I see it in the project review stages, that they are actually making an effort. When we get phone calls and we pass it along to the developer and say, I got calls from four people, you know, four persons that had issues with the traffic, the visual, the sizes of the homes, can you talk to them? Can you reach out to them? And I have some projects right now that they have had several community meetings, they're not easy, some of which I have attended to observe and to provide some additional factual information from the city. But I think it's becoming more the norm, so, because of us being built out, pretty much, and I think that's becoming more of a standard. And through our review process, we try to bring it up to the developer's attention that it might not be a bad idea to talk to the neighbors. Have you reached out to them? At pre-app, you know, we try to make sure that the applicants are aware that, hey, you're not in a vacuum here, there's people around you, and it might be a good idea for you to put a letter out there or knock on people's door. So casually, informally, and through the pre-app process, through the EDR, through our comments, I think we try to do that and make an effort to keep plugging that, you know, the need for that and the importance of that. And I think it's, like I said, I think it's becoming more the norm, as I've noticed throughout the years that I've been here, so.
Good. Mr. Hamilton, I've been involved in Seco since I started my career in the 1970s in the Friends of Mammoth decision.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I just wanted to compliment you on the quality of the documents that you produce. I think the analysis has been fair and thorough. I read them, scan through them occasionally. If the, if that checklist is no impact, I'm, I'm moving on, but, but I just wanted to comment on the quality of, of your documents. I remember in the former jurisdiction that I worked in, my environmental planners would look at me when I wanted to do something and say, what are you going to tell the judge when the EIR gets, gets sued? Or the city gets sued because of the adequacy of our environmental documents? So I, I want to thank you for the presentation tonight and, and making us more informed about what our role is in the, in the whole process. Any other comments tonight? Commissioner Garrettson? What does a full EIR cost? What kind of range?
Oof, boy, that's, that's the question of the night, I think. I would say it ranges anywhere, you know, and this all depending on the project size and how involved the technical reports might be, but for what we've experienced, I would say anywhere from maybe eighty-five thousand to maybe a hundred and forty thousand. The end for now, as I put it on this slide, I very much appreciate your time and your patience tonight, and also the, the really good questions. I hope that I can, I've provided you with a little bit of, more of knowledge, hopefully it wasn't too confusing, it's a complex issue, it changes every year. And please feel free to call upon me if you have any questions at all regarding any of the documents you're reviewing or anything. But again, very much appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Very good. Super. Moving on then on our agenda, any additional comments from, from staff?
Let's see, as far as upcoming meetings, we're looking at our schedules and projects that we have currently in the pipe, which we do have several, but the time when we're probably going to be ready to actually present projects will probably not be until September the nineteenth, that would be the next meeting, so there will be a little bit of downtime or break time, I guess, not for us. We'll be working away on, and John Hamilton will be writing all these Seco documents, as he is always busy with those. So there might be two projects, actually, one of them would be basically bringing forward some updates to our zoning ordinance, we have some cleanup items that we have to do, so that'll be hopefully on the September nineteenth. So, and there's about two or three projects that we're currently working on that hopefully will be all ready by then, or some of them. And I just wanted to provide an update, Commissioner Garrettson had asked last time about the interactive map, about adding the, the planning case numbers, and Michael worked with IT to add the numbers to our map, which there is actually a PDF document, you can actually click on it, that pulls up all of the listed projects with the planning case numbers. And although there is not a searchable function right now, I think IT was trying to look at that, right, Michael? And then try to see if we can do that to make it easier on the user, on the end-user side. But right now, I guess you can still probably search it through the PDF, too, I would believe, but it's kind of a nice, you know, one sheet that has all the summarized projects. So I just wanted to update you on that one, and that's all I have.
Okay. Any comments from the rest of the commissioners? No? Okay. Seeing no other comments, we'll stand adjourned until September nineteenth. Very good.